We're ready. Good afternoon, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 8, 2025, meeting of the Co-Hasid School Committee. Would all members that are present please indicate so in roll call? Mr. Carr.
Present.
Mr. Dial.
Present.
Mrs. Hannah.
Present.
Mrs. Leskey.
Present.
And the Chair is present, giving us a full panel of five members to start off the new year, and we'll call the meeting to order. Would all who are able please rise for the recitation of our nation's pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, to the republic which stands in the nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, before we get started, just a reminder that this meeting is being recorded, and it's being streamed by Facebook, and it's also being broadcast on GoHasid143TV. You can participate in person, you can participate virtually by utilizing the Zoom link that appears at the top of our agenda. And once you're logged on, if you would like to comment, you can utilize the Q and A feature, and we are monitoring that intermittently. I should see that pop up, and we will field your questions or concerns as we see them come in. The first agenda item, as always, is public comment. And this is the section of the agenda that is reserved for questions or concerns that are not related to something that is already on the agenda. If you have a question or a concern related to something that's on the agenda, just wait until we arrive at that point in the meeting, and you can make yourself known. But if your concern or question is not on the agenda tonight, or relates to something that's on the agenda, we're going to give you a few moments to utilize that Q and A feature to type in your question or comment, and we will address that. There is no one here in person, so just give the folks at home a moment to do that on Q and A. I know that there is someone watching that wants to make a comment about, or comment on the calendar issue, so just wait until we get there for that. Okay, I don't see any, so we'll move on to the next section of the agenda. We don't have any invited guests, so we'll skip right to our superintendent's update. And at this point, I turn the meeting over to our superintendent of schools, Mrs. Sarah Shannon.
Thank you. So first of all, just happy new year to all of our families, the community, and our students. It feels good to be in January, although it feels cold other than that. So actually, the first thing I do want to talk about is the school calendar for the 2025-2026 school year. It, I think, sometimes feels early to be talking about this in January. However, it's always interesting to see how many people start reaching out around this time, because people start making their plans for like next winter break and things like that. And there, I've actually had some folks reach out about when the first day of school is. So I think it's always good to get ahead of this and get it sorted out sooner than later so that people can make their plans. You'll see that you have three different proposed calendars this year, and where we land could be a combination of the three at some point as well. But I'm going to talk you through a few of the changes that we are proposing for this coming school year and a few options that you have to talk about for the upcoming school year. So one of the things that we did was we made a few changes with regard to our early release in our professional days. In the past, some of our early release in our professional days were backed up to one another, and so there were more days of professional learning for staff in some months than others. When we talked about that, we talked about an ideal situation for educators is actually to have the learning spread out a little bit more over the course of the year, and to potentially move the second full day or full day PD day earlier into the school year so that teachers had more opportunity to actually take advantage of what they were learning or the work they were doing rather than waiting until March. And in March, it was traditionally in the last few years backed up to an early release day. So there was an early release Thursday, a full day Friday, and then Saturday, Sunday, with everybody back to school on Monday. We're proposing this year to separate those two dates and have still an early release in March, and move that full day to January so that, as I said, we can take advantage of the learning and the work for the remainder of the school year. That is probably the biggest change that we've made with regard to professional days. You do notice that we have early release days in almost every month, except those with full days in November, which is a choppy month already with the Thanksgiving holiday and conferences. We have kept early release and full days on Friday. That has been historically what we have done in this district. I think not for this coming year, but something for us to just think about for like the 26, 27 school years, is that, does that continue to work for staff families and best case scenario for learning? Just thinking about that. And I also had a couple of people approach me about the idea of maybe doing late starts instead of early releases. And so not something at all that I'm thinking about for this year, just an idea that came forward that might be something for us to consider for the fall away that FY27 school year. But that's sort of where we stand with regard to professional development. Then there are two other things that we do want to talk about. The first is that December holiday break. You know, when Christmas and New Year fall, change every year. And this year, it was on a Wednesday, and it was a nice long break. Next year, those two holidays fall on a Thursday. I've spoken with the leadership team and the CTA leadership about that break, and that's one of the things that we really want to look at to, in time we talk about. There are three different proposals. The first proposal, and there are pros and cons to all three, and there end up, my, the solution may end up being a combination of something. So the first proposal, so draft one, actually has school being closed from December 23rd to January 1st with the Monday before break and the Friday following break be, following the new year being school days with January 16th being our full day PD and the potential 180th day of school being Tuesday, June 16th. The second draft that you have is proposing that school is closed that Monday, December 22nd, with the return to school being January 2nd, that Friday, with the full day of PD being January 16th. That does push the potential 180th day of school till Wednesday, June 17th. The third draft has school being closed similarly from that December 22nd Monday. And for families, school is closed all the way through the end of that second week through January 2nd with a return to school for students on January 5th. That Friday, however, January 2nd would be the PD day for staff, so all staff would return. And then the 16th becomes a regular day of school. The potential last day or 180th day of school with that option is Wednesday, June 17th. The final thing to consider is Good Friday, which has for the last few years not been a day off of school, but has been a topic of conversation, I think, for the last few years when we do the calendar. I've had a few conversations with the Chair about this. Operationally, having school on that day is difficult. This year alone, in the anticipation of Good Friday following or preceding April vacation, because our teachers do have in their contract that they could take a religious day, we already have 42 scheduled absences for that day for staff. 18 of those being at the high school, four at the middle school, six at Deer Hill, 13 at Osgood. While we will accommodate for that and manage that, and not all of those absences require substitutes, we are looking at that costing the district at least $3,000 in sub coverage. We can't anticipate student absences on that day, but looking at last year's absences on that day, and last year it did not fall leading up to a vacation. 264 students at the high school were absent, which is 62.5% of last year's high school student population. 79 students at the middle school were out, 37 students at Deer Hill, and 34 students at Osgood. I bring it up for consideration because of the operational concerns that it raises. Potential considerations that we talked about as a leadership team would be to continue that practice and continue to give teachers the right to take that day off as a religious holiday, to consider the idea of potentially having it be an early release day so that those who wanted to attend religious services could, if they were local, do that, potentially, and not need the full day, but they may still, in order to get to where they need to be, need the full day. Some districts actually, because we're not celebrating religious holidays, some districts do call it a day of low attendance, because it's, it's not, we wouldn't be taking it off because of a holiday. We're not celebrating and recognizing holidays on our calendar. However, it is operationally a difficult day to run the district.
And costly.
It what?
And costly.
And potentially costly. So these are the things I would put forward for your consideration and discussion when it comes to the calendar, and happy to answer any other questions as well.
Okay. Before we go to questions for Superintendent Shannon, I know that there was a community member that had contacted me several weeks ago for the first time and was interested in this winter break issue. So I had invited them to appear at the meeting tonight. While they were not able to appear in person, they were able to appear in Zoom, so I promoted them to a panelist, and I was going to invite them to share their thoughts with us before we ask Superintendent Shannon questions and deliberate, because I think it makes sense that to hear that perspective before we do that. So if anyone has any objections, I'm going to ask Mr. Naveki to please turn on your video and microphone, and hello.
Yes, hello, hi, can you hear me?
We can, could you just state your, your, your name and your street address, please?
Yes, absolutely. So my name is Anid Neveke, parent of a junior at high school, and we live in 193 Perro's Lane.
Well, thanks for coming and participating tonight.
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity to, to share my view, and it was good to hear the three options, because I can then say I'm very much, or we as a family, very much in favor of option three, which actually means in general not having school resume on Thursdays or Fridays like this year on January 2nd. And a couple of reasons from our perspective. The months between Labor Day and, and year-end break look disproportionately short of recovery time for both students and teachers. I cannot really say how exhausted teachers are, I guess they are, but I see students pretty exhausted at that time. Many families travel. We may be a particular case because we travel internationally, but I know many others who are traveling. So having to be back on January 1st is pretty exhausting and also expensive, because fares go through the roof on, on days like New Year. But even for families that are not traveling, it's, I think it's relatively tough, because even if it's not having the party until 5:00 in the morning, being back at school the day after New Year is, is pretty tough, I would say. On the other hand, the summer break looks pretty long to us, and so shortening the summer break by a few days and, and a little later in June, and add those days at the beginning of the year looks at least from our perspective relatively easy. And then you mentioned that there are pros and cons, and I've heard a number of potential different views, like having fewer warm days at school in June. I think we could also say then having fewer cold days in January is, is as valuable. So I think that is just the same either way. I've heard that people may, parents may be concerned that people, children are at home and have nothing to do. I would say that's not really the role of the school to keep children busy. That I would say is my responsibility or our responsibility as, as parents to make sure that the children are occupied. And then with regards to employers, we are working families like, like others, and I know that employers more and more actually close over the holidays, and it has been our experience with different employers over the years, and friends and neighbors, the same, they usually close a lot longer. So yes, this year, all the employers we know reopen on January 6th. So taking all this together, summary, very much in favor of extending, starting on, when looking at next year concretely, or this year, closing on 22nd and resume the, the weekend, after the weekend in the, in the first week of January.
Well, thank you so much for sharing your thoughts. We're going to continue to discuss this issue, and you know, while you're here, I'd ask you to mute your microphone now, but if there's another question you have certainly on this issue as we're discussing, certainly feel free to make it known.
Yeah, sure, no, from, oh, sorry, from, from my perspective, that was my key point. And as you know, I'm a little bit in a rush on, on Wednesday evenings all the time, so thanks again for the opportunity, and I can dial out and, and leave you alone with that, so.
All right, well, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, and I just want to note, because that's something that we haven't allowed in the past, so trying to pilot a new approach to this, because, you know, we want to encourage participation from anyone who's impacted by our district. And, you know, I think it was fairly difficult to accommodate during, say, like my first tenure as Chair was during the pandemic, and, and there were a lot of people with a lot of strong opinions, and it would have caused the meeting to go for hours longer. But what I think that we should, we might want to consider messaging to the communities that, like that gentleman, if they have some strong thoughts or, or opinions they want to share on an issue, if they contact us in advance and let me know that that's going to be happening, I think that that's a wonderful way to maybe encourage participation beyond typing in the Q and A, which I think can be sometimes frustrating for people. But it can also be useful if people just want to share a thought, or that's fine too, right? But I, I think, I don't know, if people want to appear here on the video, I'm, I'm going to see if it's, if it's practical to do that, and, and I think it works fine right now. So until it appears that it's not, you know, maybe we'll encourage people to reach out to the Chair or any member of the committee, and then you all can let me know, and we can figure it out, and they can schedule a time when they're going to be ready to be on Zoom. So just mentioning that now, because it's a little bit of a change or a shift from where we have been in the past with that, but I think it works all right. So having heard from our stakeholder and from the superintendent, if anyone has any questions for Superintendent Shannon, now would be the time to ask them. We'll just go around in alphabetical order, Mr. Carr.
Well, first, I actually like the format of that, that I think the more accessible we can be in general, I think is a pretty good idea if we can manage it. I think that's, you know, maybe some timeframe around questions or something like that, but I like, I like that we could accommodate that, we could potentially try that. Very good perspective. I had a question about draft three, which was, does the administration or the teachers have a opinion of their professional development day on the Friday, the 2nd? And what did they?
Both the leadership and the leadership of the CTA liked that, actually. They thought it was a nice way to get back into the school.
It's very nice to have options, sometimes we don't have options.
Well, this, I think, is the first year where we were provided several different calendars. So it's a clever approach, Shannon. Mr. Dial, do you have any questions for Superintendent?
A couple. So we've got three things, professional development moving from April. Did I get that right?
Separating the parts, too.
Separating the marks, that's sorry, separating the marks. So we're moving, and that's moving up professional development day and spreading those out.
Yes.
Right, okay, that, that seems non-confrontable. On the winter break, this is one I really think we should, if there's a way, for us to solicit feedback, I would like to, representing the community, try and hear more from other people about what their perspectives are.
So to that end, Mr. Dial, can I just interject? I just want to make it clear, in case it wasn't, I think Superintendent Shannon mentioned this at the outset of your presentation, but this is the initial time we're going to discuss this. There'll be a more substantive main discussion next meeting, and then final decisions will be made in the meeting after that. So if you would like us to message something, I think it's a great idea. I think we intended to do that, because we don't believe this is the last thing we want to be a surprise to people, so just throwing that in there, because you're right.
So we'd love to get community feedback on, on the winter break. On Good Friday, just a couple of questions. On the religious holiday exemption, are the religious holiday, if you think religious holiday, is that a right or is that subject to administrative approval?
No, it's a, it's a right.
So they can, yeah, at any time, they can, they can take that particular day? It's, it's not, they get one day, I know they get one day under the contract, but do they get, do they get to choose which day it is?
Yes.
That makes, that makes sense. And then on the cost, that, that the sub-cost, is it because, are they normally high because we have so many people out, or would we still have the sub-costs if the religious, if the religious day is taken anyway? We, we want our teachers to take their religious day, so, but.
It's a cost because the numbers are so high.
Okay, so that, that's very helpful. And I appreciate also you having surveyed other districts and, and governed some feedback there. So that one is another one, I think, community feedback will be, will be helpful. So with that, I'm, I'm done.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dial. Mrs. Hannah, any questions?
I don't have questions, just a couple of comments. I tend to agree with if we have days like a Monday or a Thursday, Friday, that we should use them in ways that are actually going to benefit. Because like this year, I think that first and second back, I got so many comments from the community around the fact that like, why are we going back on Thursday and Friday? That makes no sense, all they're going to do is watch videos in class, and they're not really going to learn anything. Now, whether that's true or not, that's the perspective of what's happening, right? So I think the more that we can reposition days to make them useful and make them really for education, like I like what you've done here. So I think that's useful. I think the Good Friday thing from cost perspective and from the fact that people are going to be out, it's kind of a no-brainer. Again, it's like, we could force school to happen, but it seems like it's, the community is just speaking up about that one in their own way, you know? And then I did, I thought it was interesting the way the holiday is following right now. The 22nd there, December 22nd, that Monday being a cliffhanger, I think would be perceived as another day where it's like the kids aren't really actually learning in there, our teachers engage, our kids engaged, and all that sort of stuff. So I am a proponent of the, of what the solutions you've come up with here are, agree. And the last thing I'll say is going into June, I think, once you kind of cross that Wednesday threshold, you know, like I think, like coming out on the 17th or 18th, I don't think we're going to get a lot of pushback. I think it's like when you have the cliffhanger of Monday, the 15th being our release day, then people are like, then I think you get a low attendance day probably again, you know, the 15th, 16th. So I really do like the puzzle pieces that you put together on three to come up with it, so. And it sounds like you got perspective from the teachers. One, two cents.
Right, well, thank you for those thoughts and that perspective. Mrs. Hannah, Mrs. Leskey?
Most of my questions were, were covered, but.
Now you know how I feel when I used to go be after you.
Mrs. Shannon, can you talk a little bit more about those districts that have these low attendance days? Is that just nomenclature that they're using it to sort of close school due to anticipated low attendance versus any sort of operational type thing? Okay, all right, all right. So, and, and that's just to avoid the appearance of taking, of having school closed on, just correct.
And I should note that all three versions of this currently have that day, that Good Friday day as a day of school. If that were to become a day of no school, then the 180th day does bump a day, so.
But it's not like you're leading into a new week.
Unless we had snow days. We have snow days, and it does bump to the following week.
Yeah.
And I will, I will also just second Mrs. Hannah's using educate, educational time for educational purposes, which sometimes I think the excitement of incoming breaks can last for a couple of days before the break happens versus just the Friday before, but I think it's particularly when you have a very, very short week in front of a break. The, the children themselves are out to lunch, and so that, I'll just.
Except for mine.
Well, of course.
Got some questions?
Yes, Mr. Dial.
One, one question, you, you've got the perspective of, of the districts. Is 10 days a long, like an abnormally long break period for winter break?
It is. I think that we are seeing, like this year and next year, I think we are seeing districts do that. I think it is a shift in, in, so, yes, but as the parent said, I, I think we're seeing that shift happening in professional culture as well. But I think the more and more school districts are also trying to conserve costs, we're seeing that happen, because to open for one day and key the building for one day doesn't always make sense. So I, do I think you'll continue to see it on, on years where it's really just one week off? I don't think you'll see districts doing the two weeks in those cases. I think this year and next year are sort of unique. So they'll come in cycles.
Okay. Well, just to share my perspective, I, I think I'm in line with sort of what Mrs. Hannah articulated. I, I, I think that, you know, when we, unlike the start of school where we have sort of a policy, how we do that with Labor Day, this isn't really what we're doing here, we're just trying to, we're looking at the dates and just kind of justifying the margins in terms of those two weeks. And it makes sense, it's really actually a wonderful thing. I mean, it's great, you're wrapping up the year with some time off, time with family, time to reflect and, and enjoy, and, and before you get back into it. And I, I don't, I think it's like not a huge, I don't think it's a material, materially different, you know, conclusion to the year in terms of like where we're at. You know, it's not like we're, it's changing something where we're into June 30th or something like that, so we're still getting out mid-June. And, you know, we just take it year, year by year, and if it makes sense to do that, then it might be a good thing to do, and it sounds like, you know, where the CTA is in support of something like that, you know, it seems like a, a nice thing to do, and it sounds like from Mrs. Hannah's input that she had and the input that I had from community members, and hopefully we'll receive some more, maybe we'll design a simple survey to send out and see what we can do there, but also encourage participation at future meetings. You know, maybe, maybe it's the right move, so we'll see. I mean, no decision's being made tonight. As far as the Good Friday, Mr. Dial, you're completely correct. I, I think we need to make sure that everyone has an opportunity at least to be heard on that. I, I will say that I was certainly one driving force behind removing that from a, as a no school day, because I, I feel strongly about the fact that this is a secular institution, it's a public school, right? So it applies to everyone equally, so to only recognize the only religious holiday the entire school year would be only one religion, or would apply to only one religion, and, and I just, you know, I, I, I take issue with that. However, there are the operational concerns that you noted, I mean, you can't ignore them, and, and the way Mrs. Hannah put it, I think, was like, you know, are we just like, forcing school or something like that? I mean, that's kind of what it feels like at this point. But I am in support of maybe looking at it like a, you know. But I am in support of maybe looking at it like a, you know, whatever you, you know, in, in Operations Challenge Day or something, whatever, however you put it, because it really shouldn't be recognized as a religious holiday. And that's not to diminish the importance of that day to any particular individuals. It's just the fact that I think we have to recognize that it's not, we, we can't, we can't, you know, um, endorse a particular, you know, religious creed. Um, so we'll have some input on that, but, um, that, I, I guess it was sort of, you know, I guess it didn't work out, right? We tried it and it hasn't worked out that great because we're seeing very low attendance from students, seeing low attendance from teachers. So it's really not a meaningful, like, day of learning. So those, I don't know, those are my initial thoughts. We'll continue to discuss, um, so. Uh, anyone else on the calendar issues before we move on to the next agenda item? Okay, well, thank you for that initial presentation. And, um, Superintendent Shannon, you and I maybe will collaborate on how we get outreach to the community on that issue.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Okay.
Um, a couple of other things, um, a feasibility study update. So we were, I think we mentioned this at the meeting right before the break, but just to reiterate, um, we were officially notified in December that we were not accepted into the MSBA core program for this next cycle. Um, but once we have the results of the feasibility study that we are in the middle of, we will resubmit a revised statement of interest for the next round of consideration. The deadline for that submission is April eleventh. Um, and with regard to the current feasibility study, AI three, our architects will be writing on Tuesday, January twenty-eighth to present some conceptual designs, um, for the middle high school potential project at our community forum. That forum will be held here in this room at six thirty PM. We will continue to share that date and the February date out with folks um, in the district and school newsletter and in separate communications to all families. Um, and actually this Friday, I've been invited to attend the Deer Hill PSO meeting. And we'll be speaking there specifically about the feasibility study. So if there are any Deer Hill families who want to attend and listen, um, I won't have the conceptual designs, but I can speak to everything that we've done up to this point. Um, also just wanted to talk about the strategic planning process that is getting started. I sent an email to all families and staff on Monday outlining our process. Um, that begins next week with some of our forums. We'll be holding two forums for families in the community. The first will be Tuesday, January fourteenth at six PM again in this room. That will be in person. We will also be holding a Zoom option for families who can't be in person. That will be on Wednesday, January twenty-second at six fifteen. Um, we'll send the Zoom link out for that closer to that date. Additionally, on January twenty-fourth, we're going to be sending a survey to all families. We're hoping all families will take a few minutes and complete that survey. It will give us a lot of information and data that we can use going into the strategic planning process. We hope that between the survey and the forums, all families will have an opportunity to share their thoughts, feedback and voice. We think it's really important that all stakeholder voices are a part of this process, and these are two ways that families can, um, be a part of it, but at their appropriate level of participation. We do have a higher level of participation that is available for folks. We are looking for six to eight parents or caregivers who want to be on the committee that actually takes all of the different data that the district has and does some analyzation and assessment of that and helps write the strategic plan. That is a, a more significant commitment. Um, in the letter that I sent out on Monday night, it detailed the dates of those committee meetings along the times and provided a link for those who might be interested in being on that committee. Um, so far I have one person, so I would love, and that's a staff member, so I'm hoping that some families will choose to participate. Um, I will continue to send reminders out about that, um, in hopes that we get some support there. Um, the forum for you all as school committee members will be on January twenty-second, right before the actual school committee meeting. Um, and I would invite a couple of you to be a part of that strategic planning committee as well as your schedule allow. Those are all my updates.
Thank you, Superintendent Shannon. Would you mind just, uh, briefly summarizing what the strategic plan is for folks watching at home, like what, what the purpose of it is?
Yeah, um, so the strategic plan is really the guiding document for all of the work that the schools will be doing for the next three to five years. So um, there was a strategic plan for the district that went from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-four, and it was a very robust plan. And a lot of the work that was a part of that plan was completed in that year of span, or span of years. Um, and we actually, a lot of our district goals this year are completing the work, a lot of the work that was outlined in that strategic plan. Um, this new strategic plan will really think about and take all of the data to determine what are the priorities for the direction of the district for the next three to five years. That then will guide our decision-making, our budgeting, um, and really all of the work that we are doing, um, as we move forward until the completion of that strategic plan. Um, it will be our driving force. So having all voices participate is really crucial.
Thank you. I appreciate that just too. And, and I, you know, I think as a committee, we should collaborate on, on how we get the message. It's a super important process. It's actually been the most fulfilling experience I've had as a school committee member in six years. It's really, really interesting. I mean, district leadership, staff, students, um, are involved in it. Um, I don't think we had community members last time. Um, I don't know whether we didn't invite them, we just didn't get any participation. Um, we didn't get, we got very low participation from staff as well. Um, and it might have been the timing, who knows what that was, but, um, it's rea- it's really, um, a really fulfilling experience. And it's a great way, if you have a lot of passion and interest in the school district, to get involved, but maybe it's like, it's, it's a much more succinct time commitment. I mean, it's, it's, it's heavy for a short time. Um, so, uh, we'll, we'll try and figure out ways. If you, you guys have any suggestions, like email me about, you know, ways in which we can educate our um, stakeholders about what this process is, what the strategic plan is, um, and, um, and also recruit potential community members that want to participate in the, um, strategic planning committee. Uh, let us know. I mean, be on a district email that will be sent out from the school committee, which will happen anyway, but. All right, any questions for Superintendent Shannon on either feasibility or strategic planning?
Yes. Question on the, on the feasibility study. Um, what was the date on that again? Cause I was, I was hearing January. I'm like, that's so far off.
We're in January. It's January twenty-eighth. It's Tuesday night.
So on that, you mentioned they were going to show plans. Uh, one of the things that we had talked about in the feasibility studies is, it seems like before we get to plans, maybe do this thing, that is an assessment of town resources and whether or not there's a renovation project, like you have every take as opposed to just jumping to plans of new facility. So I guess.
So they're not, so it's, um, conceptual design of all of the different options. So they'll present an option that's not really designed, but the idea that we just do code updates and upgrades in the building and so that doesn't actually change the sort of aesthetics and the layout. Then they'll do conceptual designs that are addition renovation. They'll show conceptual designs of, um, add demolition, renovation, um, and then new build. So we're not making any decisions about what version. Yeah, but there's giving us options. These are exactly what you're asking for, but there's conceptual designs for all of them.
And are they, do they have, because part of this, um, part of what we're hoping to get out of this is thoughts on cost and town's ability to finance. Um, will that be part of this as well?
That's the third in the series of, um, forums.
Okay.
So first they're going to show us the conceptual designs, then they're going to take the time to look at what the cost estimates would be for those conceptual designs. That meeting is towards the end of February. Um, and they'll share those at that time. And then if this were, if we were part of the MSBA process, we would then take all of that information and utilize a rubric to help us make a decision about what right option is for us. Um, because we're not in the process yet, we're not going to go that far, but we will have the designs and potential costs, um, by the end of the study.
Thank you.
A really good question, Mr. Dial, because if that wasn't clear, you know, it should be, but we will also articulate that in the notices that go out to try and get people to cover this. We'll make sure that people understand that this is like a, a phased process where you're going to be looking at different, um, subject matter for each, um, forum. Like we, we've done the first one. Um, where we had the, um, the aerial map and, and, um, and then the next one will be the, this presentation of, of design options, and then there'll be some of those other considerations we just mentioned. So we'll make sure we articulate that. But good, good point, because if that wasn't clear, people were probably thinking that we're jumping the gun here.
Yeah.
I, I just know that when we talked to select board and at town meeting about this, act of this, this appropriation, uh, we, we characterize it as pathing, you know, what are our options? So it's, it's very gratifying to hear that that's exactly what people are getting.
Absolutely. Exploratory fact-finding endeavor.
Wonderful.
Okay, any other questions for the superintendent related to either feasibility or strategic planning? Seeing none, thank you very much for your update, Superintendent Shannon. And we'll move on to Agenda Block E, which is a teaching and learning. And, uh, at this time, I would, uh, turn the meeting over to our Director of Student Services, Mr. Michael Stapleton, and invite our wonderful CPAC, um, Special Education Parent Advisory Council Liaison to join us. Thank you for being here. Ms. Brian?
Could I just have permission to share my screen?
Ms. Staples? Um, of course, I'll grant you that permission, Mr. Stapleton.
Thank you.
Voila.
Well, thank you, everyone. Uh, I just have three quick updates for tonight. Um, so the first being the data sharing, which I've not done so far. So December, uh, was a quick month for the Department of Student Services. As you can see, there was five annual review meetings at the elementary level, um, for reevaluation meetings where all four students are found eligible again. At the middle and high school, there were six annual reviews. Uh, there was two reevaluations where two students were also found eligible again. Um, and then one initial evaluation that came from a family that was not eligible. Um, out of district, there was two annual review meetings, um, one independent evaluation meeting, also a total of, you know, twenty-one meetings, uh, so, you know, a quick three weeks, but a productive three weeks in December. Um, continuing the tracking for IP acceptance rate at the start of the school year, since the start of the school year, and this was September to October tracking, um, shifting into the September to November tracking, um, and then a positive, um, you know, from my perspective for September to December, you know, we have sixty-four signed and accepted IPs, um, since meetings that were held, there are, you know, six in the process being written right now to adhere to the ten-day timeline. You're following a meeting come to send to families, and then we're waiting on twenty-one responses from families from the meetings that have happened. Um, so again, I think, you know, um, relatively good data. We have a lot of signed and accepted IPs and positive feedback coming from family members, um, for the documents that we're writing in a new format too, which is a big win, I think, for the department and for the hard work of the teachers, you know, adjusting to the new format as we move that forward. That would be my first update. Um, at the last meeting, I was, you know, requested to talk a little bit more about the, um, student success plan that we've created this school year. And really these are done when, you know, evaluations completed, whether it's an initial evaluation or reevaluation. Um, and then a student's found not eligible and they may not be eligible for a section five oh four plan as well. Um, and so really when we look at this plan, it's, it's pretty straightforward, but it's a nice way to document, um, you know, the hard work that's done, you know, from evaluators and, you know, parents saw that outside evaluation, how that, you know, how we can get a good snapshot and overview of a student's profile, um, that may not be eligible for an IP or five oh four plan. Um, so you know, here you list the student's name, their grade level, the meeting date, um, the type of meeting, um, an area of identified disability, and then, you know, a summary of the meeting that was held, whether it was the initial evaluation or the reevaluation. Um, there'd be a description of student strengths, um, based on the data that has, you know, been, um, compiled from the evaluation, um, the description of current level of performance, um, from general education feedback and direct feedback from teachers. And then the, that determination that while the student does not require, you know, specialized instruction or an IP to, um, to make effective progress, that, you know, this evaluation was done and it's really important to document that. And then thinking about the D cap, which I know has been presented on previously, which I'm still working on, kind of polishing. As the Director of Student Services, we will list out specific accommodations, um, based on those, you know, best practice type accommodations, but important accommodations to memorialize in a written format or plan. Um, and so that's really kind of the format of the student success plan, um, that we have drafted. And I'm open to kind of hearing parent feedback and teacher input too, as we move this forward. You know, we have a limited number, I would say, of student success plans, um, following initial evaluation or reevaluation meetings. Um, but I do think this is a nice kind of way to document and memorialize things, um, for families and for students. Um, to make sure that, you know, again, all of that information can be kind of found in one spot. Teachers are aware that, you know, this type of evaluation occurred. There was that concern about, you know, a child's learning profile. Um, and that's nice to have to move on to the next rate level too. So nothing gets lost in that shuffle. Um, we've uploaded these to Aspen, so general education teachers would be aware that these exist. It's a nice place just to house everything to make sure that it's all in one spot. That would be the student success plan update. Um, and then my final update for tonight really is just a follow-up about this, um, Special Education Strategies Task Force work that I've been engaging with, with the community. Um, so as I had mentioned at my previous meeting, I really opened this up for parent input, um, to talk about the, why we were identified as a needs, uh, needs assistance district, um, for the proficiency gap on special, for special education students performing not the same level as general education or typical peers. And so we had a great first meeting that took place on December tenth. I've obviously listed the participants who came. So we had our great representation from each level, each building and parent, um, you know, input. And really this was held as kind of a open forum to talk about different experiences of families, of staff, as to why this proficiency gap, you know, may exist, um, and how we can really move things forward for our students. And so, you know, we broke this larger group up into smaller groups and engaged in dialogue, you know, just about that, about ways to move things forward, um, personal experiences. So that, those, that conversation ranged from curriculum concerns to executive functioning supports, really kind of a, a nice overview of like, you know, why this gap would exist and how to move things forward. Um, and so that was great. And then from there, I narrowed the focus a little bit more to really work on our, the gap statement in addition to creating an action plan, um, to really target this work specifically, which aligns nicely with the future strategic planning process and how we consider, you know, special education student performance. Um, so this is the refined kind of, um, smaller group task force that met this week. Um, and again, we looked at, um, I categorized, which I'll get to here, the different categories of types of supports that the community and teachers um, collaborated on to identify, you know, why this gap may exist and how we can close that gap for students. Um, these were the eight categories that really came up. And so this week we ranked from these categories, specific recommendations made by teachers, by parents, um, to really focus in on um, three to five potential action steps that we could do in order to close the gap and address, um, you know, the needs assistance, um, classification from the state. And so this work will continue on, and it's just, this is just a brief update at this point in time. Um, Rock Roberts and myself will be going to the second reconvene meeting, um, for the Fed Strategies, um, work, uh, next week on Thursday. And so there will um, polish some of the information received from the community members and from the educators who works, um, to, you know, list out these different, um, strategies, and then that will help refine the plan moving forward. Um, and so it's been a productive two meetings. We'll reconvene for a third time to really kind of, um, polish that statement, like I said, and the action steps, uh, which will be published, you know, through this venue, through school committee, um, and then the work that the department does, um, to really work with the students.
Okay, well, thanks very much, Stapleton. Um, are there any questions for Mr. Stapleton? Um, we'll start with the committee in alphabetical order. Mr. Carr? Mr. Dial?
Nothing here. Folsom presentation. Yeah, where are you going? Thank you.
Um, Mrs. Hannah? Mrs. Leskey, do you have any questions for Mr. Stapleton relative to anything you just presented?
No, they're nice questions. Um, thank you for doing this, because I know I was curious about how the student success plan, um, project was going to work. When these are developed, is it developed with the parent, with the classroom teacher, with the special education team? How, who, who is sort of party to this? And then is there an approval process once it's written? Is it just an internal document? So how does it exist once it's live?
Yeah, so.
How does it get alive? And then what does it do institutionally?
So recommendations are made like at that formal team event, so between parents, teachers, general education, special education.
Okay.
Um, and any like finding of no eligibility that's written in, we always make recommendations, right? Like at the end of evaluation, there needs to be some follow-up, right?
Right.
That was just completed. There's a lot of information and there's always ways, you know, we want to make sure that it's all carried over to support students. And so a lot of the time, or so far this year, those recommendations have been made in that team format, written down in that finding of no eligibility, and then, um, those elementary team chairs, um, secondary team chair have been the have been the ones to kind of move this documentation forward. Um, and then like I mentioned, it's uploaded to Aspen and that's how it's held right now. Um, I think, you know, my understanding is that there has been some dialogue back before parents, that there's been specific questions about it. And so, and we're open to that too. Um, if we were to review it and say like, you know, we talked about this accommodation, it's not there, we felt really strongly that it should be listed. Um, you know, I think we're always open to coming back.
So it's very similar to almost the IP development process in terms of the voices that participate, but it's just a less sort of formal.
Correct. I would say it's driven exactly from that process. And usually like had, that, that discussion's had by the end of that meeting, um, and then that's identified as the next step. Similar to with when like a five oh four plan is represented, not, you know.
Love this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, I have a question for you relative to the IP acceptance pie charts that you had there. So you just displayed the most recent one in your packet that you provide us. You have the historical, historical, like, like a couple of months back. And the rejected sliver gets smaller until it's non-existent tonight. What does that illustrate? Would it, so where are, what's happening with those that were rejected?
So I, yeah, so those cases that of, or IPs that have been rejected have been resolved with families, whether that's through, and I don't want to speak specifically, it's obviously a low number, right? So I don't want to, you know, overly identify anyone. Yeah, so whether that's through the mediation process, through, you know, a reconvening team meeting, um, but we have been able to come to an agreement with those families. Um, so that those IPs are accepted and that's moving forward.
Okay, so all of those that were in that dark strip, um, dark color strip. It been, they're resolved, they're completely resolved, regardless of what the resolution process was. Great, thank you very much. And uh, I was, um, I was, I've, I've been, uh, at the um, last um task force meetings and those have been, I think, really well received. You, you're doing a wonderful job there, I think, everyone would agree. So thank you. Mr. Stapleton.
Actually, one more, just like formal update from the department. Um, this past week, um, our elementary team chair, Colleen Barrow, um, did submit her, um, letter of resignation. She moved on to a different district. Um, I just wanted to make that, you know, public knowledge that was posted, um, you know, for, which still the community is aware. Um, so she'll be working until January thirty first, so the end of the month, um, and then a transition plan will be forthcoming from there. Um, so I've worked closely with Colleen, um, you know, I will be working closely with Colleen to have, um, for the remainder of the month to help with that transition. Um, but there'll be a notification coming for, you know, an interview committee and I would welcome parent feedback at the elementary level on that as well. Um, which will be important to move forward.
Okay, so, um, great point to raise tonight. Thank you for doing that. And just, so just before we turn to our CPAC liaisons, what is, do you have a timeline set up yet or that it's an important position? So do you have like a, um, like a contemplated timeline, a chronology as to when you expect the position to be filled?
So not at this point in time. So this happened, you know, Monday of this week was when we were notified and it was posted. And so I would say by the end of next week, there'll definitely be that more formalized timeline. It has been posted to school spring, you know, there have been two applicants, so I'll, I'll be monitoring that. And that will also drive like when we're able to set up your interviews and that next step. So, um, there'll be a formal notice, notice coming from the office.
And I wasn't, I didn't mean to imply that you should have by tonight. I was just asking like what your expectation.
Yeah, there's definitely, it's definitely an important position to fill and we'll be moving, you know, hopefully quickly, but also making the right choice in the decision-making process.
And we started talking about if we don't have somebody in that seat by the time January thirty first comes, what's the plan? And so we're working through that and we'll share that as well.
If it becomes necessary.
If it becomes necessary, ideally it won't.
Okay.
But I have plan A, B, and C.
Um, no good plan is out of backup. So thank you so much, Mr. Stapleton. Um, so, Ms. Brian, Ms. David, Ms. Davis, excuse me, do you guys have any questions or any comments or any updates of any nature that you'd like to share?
I think just to follow up with what you said, you know, to see that added piece in there this year about rejected IP's and to see how quickly they're getting resolved, I think it's great, you know, however it is. Those families, I know when they have a rejected IP, you're kind of pushing. So that's really awesome. I feel like that's really positive. So thanks for adding that onto that. And I had something else too, but I should have a pen up here so I can take notes, cause there's only so long. There's another, oh, I know what it was that I don't have it in front of me. That's why the, that, the student support. I think that that is just such an amazing way that parents can feel like their concerns are heard. And so much of what we have needed has been to really bridge that gap between the school and the family because we're all here together to help the students move along. And I feel like that's a really important piece. So, yeah, it's great.
Just a few months in, I feel like it's, it's all really, it's really positive. So thank you.
Same with the task force, even if we had to do it. I think it really is awesome. I think parents felt really great being there and being able to speak and share at that first meeting. So, um, I think it was a great conversation and so much awesome information came out. So that was good too.
Do any members of the committee have any questions for our CPAC liaison?
Real quick, I'm so sorry. Come on, we just put in a quick plug. We do have a CPAC meeting tomorrow at eleven o'clock in the, what is that right?
Community room.
Yep.
It's tomorrow at eleven.
All along.
So glad you said it and had it in my calendar and you know I love to come.
We'll say it was posted everywhere. It was coming out all over. I could have social media presence, right?
The topic is just the current special programming at each building level and so that's what we're saying.
Yeah. Oh, awesome. Okay, great. Well, thank you for saying that. I don't have a social media presence, so. It's me, not you. Um, I have a quick, does anyone have any questions for CPAC liaison? Um, just to get us in, I'm kind of asking the same type of question that I do, like, students when they're here. Like, any critical thoughts? Is, are there any problems that you've been made aware of from any of our special education, like, community members relative to how things are progressing? I mean, you know, uh, have a new Director of Student Services for the first half of the year. Like, are there any critical concerns or any concerns at all that you can share with us?
I think that, um, primarily the concerns are, um, you know, how are changes going to be made? I think that people have seen some positive things. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback so far from different people who have had meetings this year, which is great. I think there's some trepidation still, you know, like, are things going to be progressing in a different way or is it going to be kind of the same? Yeah, that's what.
Do people, do people feel that there's at least, because I feel that Mr. Stapleton has been, been extremely like, um, accessible? Um, do people at least feel that they have, like, they, they know sort of the avenues to follow, the pathways to follow in order to sort of pursue any concerns?
I'd so far, yes, and I believe so. I think a lot more people are understanding, like, um, just even the way you explained, like, the basic rights of the media, like I said, was very clear to people. And I have heard people, um, they just seem to be a little less on edge, you know, and seem more comfortable, um, going forward. And so I think so. I think it's kind of a, it's a new feel, sort of. Sensing. So, yeah. And we're just trying to go with the momentum to, to kind of make sure that we're all working together and on, on the same team. That's like our, our hope. So, you know, getting more people involved.
Okay, well, you're, you're, you know, you're, you're here every other meeting, so please continue to bring anything that comes up, like, let us know about it. You know exactly how to get in touch with our director and let him know as well. He's super responsive, so. Um, I'm just glad that you two could be here tonight and that, you guys have anything else to share?
I don't think so. I just want to thank all of you. I was thinking of you guys as I was getting myself ready to get out the door. And the fact that you guys here on the committee do this every other week, really what a service to our community. So thank you so much.
Does it happen before or does it happen after? I'm not sure.
And, and thank you to your partners too, who I know are.
Own cooking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks guys. Thanks for coming. Mr. Stapleton, thank you so much. Uh, that I imagine conclude the presentation. So we'll move on to block F of the agenda, which is budget resource and governance. And the first item there is just a sort of, um, casual budget update because we're in sort of a little bit of a crisis, so we want to make sure that we're acknowledging that every meeting. And so, uh, rather than having Ms. Owen provide a full update today, where Stapleton presented, I just asked the superintendent of school to sort of touch on that topic for us and let everyone know where we're at with that process.
Um, so we are in a similar place. There's not a lot to report. What I can share with everybody is I spoke with the folks at Open Architects earlier this week and they have shared that they will have the findings of their, um, analysis for us in time to present those findings at the January twenty-second meeting. Um, so we will have more information to share then. In addition, we will be sharing on February second at our school committee meeting our FY twenty-six budget proposals. Um, and so I would welcome all families who are interested to really participate or pay attention to those two meetings specifically. Um, I will continue to keep people updated as well through the newsletter. So once things are being presented at school committee, that following newsletter, I will share things, um, publicly through the newsletter as well. And we will post the presentations online on our website. We want to make sure that everybody has access to all of the information being shared. And, um, in the meantime, if there's anyone who has questions or concerns or ideas, I would welcome them to give a call to the office instead of a time to come in and meet with both me and Mrs. Owen and, um, have a conversation. Um, but starting on the twenty-second, we should have a lot more to share with folks.
Okay, thank you so much. Anyone have any questions for Superintendent on that brief update? Hello?
Complex, I'm going to go sneak out to China.
Yes, Mr. Dial needs to leave at seven oh two. Ms. Bach, seven oh two, Mr. Dial leaving. Um, before he goes, Mr. Dial. Do we have an executive session?
I have to draft a.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Okay, so that, I was just asking Mr. Dial that question because it leads us into the next agenda item, which is the executive session minutes. Um, as you all may recall, we had been the subject of sort of, uh, an open law, um, an open meeting law, the inquiry regarding our minutes and our, um, minute taking and posting policies and practices. And so we're, you know, trying to keep in line with, um, bringing ourselves more into compliance there. Um, we thank that person for pointing that out. We want to do the best we can. We strive to, um, meet every regulation requirement we can. Um, to that end, we, um, have started taking executive session minutes. Mr. Dial just indicated to me that, um, he hasn't finalized them yet. Um, but when he does, what we need to do is periodically, and so you'll see this agenda item periodically, periodically pop up on the agenda so that we go, we'll move into executive session, um, to decide whether or not we're going to declassify executive session minutes. And then we can, um, depending on whether or not we classify them, that we'll then approve them in open meeting and then we'll post them. And declassification can depend on a number of different variables, obviously, whether the sensitive nature of the information remains sensitive. And a lot of times if it has to do with building security or personnel, it, it, it may remain sensitive for, for an extended period of time. Um, but in some cases it may not. So we don't have anything to vote on, so we won't move an executive session for that purpose. But I'm putting it on here because, and we'll continue to put it on here until we get the, um, the finalized version. Um, just so we can continue to do some, um, more vigilant record-keeping and reporting on that issue. So, um, anyone have any questions about either the budget update or the executive session issue? Executive session minutes, excuse me. Nope. Okay, so move into block G, which are reports from subcommittees and liaison positions. Uh, we'll just move around in alphabetical order. Mr. Carr, do you have any reports?
No reports.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Dial is absent now. Mrs. Hannah?
No.
Ms. Leskey, do you have any reports? Neither does the chair, so we'll move right along to the last section, block H. We do have to discuss the, uh, approving the use of Deer Hill for the May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five election date. And that, uh,
It's just Saturday then.
That's, yeah, it's Saturday, okay. So it's Saturday. So I don't know how controversial that will be. As the school isn't open, uh, for, you know, learning. So, um, I, we just need to decide whether we want to approve that or not for the town. The town obviously wants to utilize the school facility. So I don't know if there's any discussion, you can just speak at will. You don't need to be recognized.
I'd like to make a motion.
Uh, motion's been made to, uh, to, to what?
To approve.
Motion's been made to approve the use of the Deer Hill facility for the May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five election. Is there a second?
All second.
Mrs. Hannah seconds the motion. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Sentences? So that motion carries by a vote of four school committee members. So Superintendent Shannon, we'd ask you to please notify the town that we have approved that.
Yeah.
And there are no topics that, uh, were brought to my attention within forty-eight hours. Um, after the agenda was posted, we don't have, I don't believe we have any minutes to approve because I don't have any in my folder.
No, we don't. We are caught up. We are compliant with the state. We, the last meeting is the only one that I need to review. So.
Oh, excellent.
Very glad to have that.
Thank you so much, Mr. Carr. And thank you, Ms. Bach.
Yeah, she's wonderful.
Um, and we're just, and we are including any exhibits, any, so these, any of these materials we're including as, um, on, we have to list them on the, um, when we post them, we have to like have links there.
Links to them, okay.
Okay.
They're all online.
Great. This is awesome. See? Always room for improvement. All right, thank you, Mr. Carr. Uh, no need to move into executive session, so is there a motion this time?
Move adjourned?
Motion's been made to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
All second.
Motion's been seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Sentences? Motion carries by a vote of four members and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all so much for your participation and for your attendance or for watching this recording. Have a great evening.